Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the January 10th meeting of the Board of Selectmen. At this time, I'd like everybody to stand in Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chairman Hitler is out sick tonight, and Selectman Osborne is joining us by phone. The item on the agenda, this is a meeting to go over the town warrant article and finalize the draft.
Can we take it from there?
Yes.
All right, so the first page, since last week we met, the first page has not changed. You move to the second page. Article two now has the article that will probably be as appeared, but they're going to finalize that on Thursday night. There's one lone zoning article. Operating budget is Article three. Those numbers are all filled in. Beth gave me those today, so we're looking at $7,464,993. And default is $7,227,983. Then we're going to move on to the second page, or third page, which is a continuation of the budget, with anticipated revenues being $3,446,510. So the amount to be raised by taxation proposedwise is $4,018,483. Default is $3,781,473. When you divide that by our net assessed evaluation of $1,259,803, gives you an estimated tax impact of $3,190, proposed and $3,000 default. Article four is not changed. That's the non-union raises at 3%. Article five is the library wages. You also saw that's not changed. Article six is not changed, which is park and rec wages. Seven has not changed either, which is the firefighter EMT.
If I can, real quick, the estimated tax impact, we're down into the half a cent and two tenths of a cent.
Well, I don't know how else you want me to put it.
Based on what dollar value? Hundred thousand, two fifty?
Nope, based on the, you take the warrant article and divide it by the 1, 2, 5, 9, 803. That's how you get all the tax impacts.
Okay, thank you.
So it's not really even a penny when you get down to park and rec. I know it's, it's a, I just thought I would show it that way. When you get down to the ambulance, you guys talked about the adding the word replace. Article eight talks about to purchase to replace one. Okay, because I think the word and would allude you to be two. The next one is the capital area dispatch. The only thing there changed was the last part of it that says if approved, the fire department operating budget would be reduced by $11,152 instead of 10. It still doesn't change anything else. Article 10 talks about the police cruiser. I just added another sentence to that because to kind of put that, what you wanted into the question is kind of made it a little kind of clunky. So I just wrote the second sentence after the question, says this would replace a vehicle that's already retired.
Yep.
Article 11, we have an esteemed guest that can speak to that. She just showed up. So Janine is here for parks and rec. And I apologize, she sent it to me December 15th, and thank God she resent it to me. So Janine is here to discuss the next article that I placed in there, which talks about skateboard park equipment. And the question is, shall the town raise and appropriate the sum of $5,000 for the purchase of three skate park features? So I'll let Janine take it from there.
Janine Lynch, Parks and Rec's chairman. I sent an email to everyone on the board Thursday, so I don't know if you got it. Okay, so just to read for those that didn't get the email. So we've been reaching out to, we reached out to three companies. Two between the distance and the replies didn't work out, and we were able to contact Narbear. They're currently out of Pennacoke, New Hampshire, and they make skate park features and also snowboarding features for mountains like Ragged Mountain and Cannon. So they're New England equipment. And so they were kind enough to look at the dimensions of our park and what we wanted to do, and give us ideas of something as they described that it would be able to be used by skateboarders, scooters, BMX riders, and many variations of tricks to be performed. And it's also for learning for beginners, but entertaining enough for intermediate and advanced users. Because what we're looking at here is parks besides Chase Park really caters to a lot of team sports with all the fields. And the skate park is something that actually caters to people, young and old, that are not on a team sport. So it's really a lot of ages. And we've definitely asked about interest in town, and we've definitely got feedback, positive feedback on improving it and upgrading it and keeping it maintained. And we did work this year already. The fencing's all newly finished and in great shape. So this will be great for inside. So it is, it's three features. Like Naomi said, it's a flat rail, a manual pad, and an A-frame. So the flat rail's 12 foot by one foot by two inches wide. Intermediate to advanced element users will jump onto and grind the metal rail sliding and jumping off the other end. And there's images. Manual pad is eight foot by four inches by three feet, and it's beginner to intermediate. There's metal edges around the top perimeter, which serves an area for users to grind and also protection of the element. The top surface between the edges is composite known as Skate Lite or Ramp Armor. It's denser than wood and not water-permeable. Users will often manually wheelie across this performing spins and tricks. You can tell the person that writes this is very active in these sports with the lingo. And lastly, the A-frame is eight foot by five feet by 10 inches. Beginner to advanced, this has the same composite top sheet, manual pad used to jump off and do spins and tricks. It will likely get the most use. So here's the three elements that we're looking to do. So Parks and Recreation is asking for $5,000 on this warrant article to put the flat rail, manual pad, and A-frame, built, constructed locally in New Hampshire, delivered, and installed this spring. So if this approves, we could start as early as April 4th of 2022.
So I didn't add the locally, just, it just confines it too close.
It's fine.
So I just felt.
We're going to put out some, we're going to advertise it on our social media pages too and everything. That's fine.
That's why it wasn't purchased locally, because, you know, that confines you too locally.
Yeah, right, no, that's fine, absolutely. I'm appreciative for whatever we can do. Questions?
Yeah. Do these kids that are over there using the skate park, do they have equipment on? Helmets and stuff?
Yes and no. So a lot of them that I've seen, at least a helmet. I don't know as far as kneepads and things like that, but typically helmets. I'm not there observing it all the time. I know we have signs on all of our parks, use at your own risk. Because it's the same for softball, baseball. They're all required to wear helmets, you know, is it enforced by the coaches? It's kind of all that same development. We hope everyone's safe. Same with the tennis courts and racquetball and all that kind of stuff. They could probably benefit to have eye protection. Any other questions?
I thought, I may be wrong, you may correct me, but I thought that was a skateboard park. And I remember we had discussions before to keep scooters and bicycles out of there. So is this something new?
Well, that's a good question, so.
Because there had been issues with them in the past when we had that joint meeting with the school.
If they're the right bicycle, it's different than just riding your bike around. These are meant for the tricks, the trick BMX bikes that are really little, the smaller wheels, like an adult would look very oversized on them. So that would be versus bicycles. And I think that's why in the description he specifically said the BMX bike, because it's the same type of trick riding and things like that.
That's what I'm just saying, is that, you know.
I don't think we have signage wording. I mean, I can double check and make sure that we don't have signage wording conflicting, saying one thing when we're kind of trying to. I mean, if the person building the equipment says this is what it's built for, then I definitely want to not say, you know, don't do that. But you're right, it shouldn't just be for ten-speed bicycles just going around.
Well, I mean, even like mountain bikes or something like that. But I know there was an issue before that we did with the joint meeting with the school back a few years ago.
But I think it had to do with a lot of the older, bigger bikes.
Yeah, and they had people in there riding bikes and doing other stuff that.
We deal with similar stuff with that, like the tennis court. There's tennis players and there's pickleball players, and they can't all use the court at the same time. They're trying to work together. So it's probably similar on that, or, you know, I think if the area was empty, there'd be more room. So it's, you kind of have to be, you have to give right away to people that are using it for its intended use.
Okay.
Can I, can you leave me one of those so I can, wait a minute? Oh, I can have the whole thing?
You can have the whole thing. I have more.
Not that I want to learn.
I can print more, right? Me too. All right, any other questions? Thank you for allowing me to come tonight.
Thanks, Janine.
Thank you. So then we move on to 12, which has not changed either, is the special revenue fund for the transfer station to restrict 50% of the recycled revenues. That has not changed. 13, I did make a change. This is, I guess you guys will have to decide this. I tossed around this a little bit, and last year, as you know, we didn't get a dump truck. So this year, the thought was maybe that if we took the 260 withdrawn from the unreserved fund balance, might give us a better chance that instead of 21 cents, it's cost you zero. Just a thought, you guys have to decide that. Just trying to, because if we're down, another one is going to be two down.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're down two, this will be two down.
Make it a little more palatable, maybe.
Yeah, so next year you'd be three down.
So that's entirely to you, that is a change. I don't know if you want to talk about that or how you want to do that. I guess you can talk about it next week, anyway. So, but you need to tell me if you want to change it or not change it.
I would leave it, I mean, we went through that with the cruisers a few years ago when we first started getting the Dodge.
2017, that's where I get the wording from.
With the Dodge Chargers, and I think it was more received. A lot better than putting it on the tax bill to continue down the road further.
Am I having an issue?
And I don't think there'd be an issue with it, no?
No, I don't, I think it's.
You get him that truck that he needs.
All set?
Yeah.
Okay, then Article 14, I changed the medium duty. I had, I think, a larger 4500 or something, but I used the medium duty. And what I did was added the words replacing. Instead of purchasing, we were going to be replacing. I also changed the dollar amount, because the total of the project is 135, but when he went to CIP, his request was to take 40 out of the, to use 40, let me rephrase that. Because if you look at the article, you're going to add $95,000 to the Highway Truck and Equipment Capital Reserve Fund for the purpose of replacing one fully equipped medium duty. So Beth placed in front of you the account balances. And if you look at the Highway Truck and Equipment, there's 58,000. So the thought was we would kind of air mark 40. So if we added the 95 to the 58, you had the ability to purchase the truck, which has shaved a few cents off.
Yeah, sounds good.
Okay?
He definitely needs that with the other one.
And we don't want to drain that, because you never know if something was to come up and need something, something could go wrong all winter long. Excuse me. So Article 15 is road reconstruction. That has not changed. Article 16 for the master plan update has not changed. You'll see that I did not have the cemetery trustees or side prey money on there. So I've added that one back on. Again, it's zero, in case there's some projects that need to be done. Article 18 is a very lengthy, wordy, however you want to call it. Last time you didn't have any wording. For the wording that was there, we changed around quite a bit. And I think we need to have a discussion on this one. It's my understanding, we are going to have a discussion on this one. I've talked to John, so anybody else?
So my recommendation at this point, after some, a lot of thought about this, I don't feel that we're ready to present this to the town to get us a favorable vote. We have not had enough time to put together anything that's going to educate the voters. The few that have attended the meetings here, the few that do watch on YouTube, the ones that read the articles that various periodicals put out. I think that to ask for this kind of money, 1.5, round number, million dollars, we need to have a better plan in place. And we also have the if-then issue with regarding if Article nine passes and that changes the numbers in Article 18. I think that's just going to make it too confusing for the voters. They're going to see the numbers. We can't properly express the need of this in a short period of time, being an SB2 town. So my recommendation is for now, let's remove Article 18.
I mean, can you put up, could we put a PowerPoint presentation together and really? No, because we've got, what, February, we've got the.
We don't have enough time. I think, I think the ideal thing to do, similar to what happened some three, four years ago when we were pitching the idea multiple years in a row for the highway garage, I think it would be in everybody's best interest if we had that kind of a town hall forum put together, along with audio cues that we could provide for the voters. That would be coming from dispatch recordings to give true examples of the pain that both fire and PD are experiencing.
And I think the other thing is to do it like we did with the highway construction, the highway bond money, is to turn around and have them come in and actually run a town. I did that two years ago for that money, and we actually did it a couple of different occasions. And that way opened it up, but.
Now, the flip side of this whole thing is while I'm recommending we do take away the warrant article for 1.5, for a round number, we still are the agents to expend the full amount of the ARPA, 475 this year, 475 next year when we get it. I'm still proposing that we use that money for the radio improvements. And I've got a series of questions that I've handed to Naomi to reach out to both Motorola and the vendor to see what that amount of money can get us. This way, we can at least have some forward progress on the radio system. So we can still have some improvements. And then in a year or two, give us enough time to go to the voters, educate the voters on the problems that PD, highway, and fire are having. And then obviously ask for a much lesser amount than 1.5 million dollars.
So we take the ARPA money and maybe put up some of the towers this year? Is that what you're saying?
We'll have to see what.
Depending on what the numbers are, yes. I'm going to be asking that from Motorola, that we get an à la carte style pricing list for all the improvements they've requested, break it down by site location. What's Clough Park going to cost? What's Chase Park going to cost? What's east where? What's south where? What's Mine Hill? What are those components going to cost? Adding microwave versus fiber, the other details involved. If we can get à la carte money, à la carte pricing for that, we can better sit down and figure out with the fire chief, police chief, and highway department what routes we feel we ought to go with in conjunction with our discussions with Motorola in two ways. I think that's the safest and best option at this time.
Johnny, do you have any opinion?
Well, I somewhat agree with John. I mean, we do have just a short window here. To educate the, you know, voters, I don't think we have done that very well. I don't think we could do it very well.
Right.
I think possible, maybe next year, this upcoming year, sometime have a, maybe an informational meeting somewhere, and bring the radio people back in to see what comes up out of that. Might be an option.
Are you going to make a motion, John, on that?
I'm going to make a motion that we retract Article 18 for 2022.
Warrant.
From the warrant article, yes.
Second. All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes. John?
Yes.
Okay.
So now your warrant articles are going to change. The numbers will change from here on out. We can fix that. Forster is the next one, that hasn't changed. The Article 20 request from CC, you had asked me to reach out to Conservation for exactly what the value is of the properties. I think when we left last week, 401-117 containing 31 acres is one that kind of increased the area of protection. The 408-129 was 19 and a half acres, kind of in the middle of Pondview or off of Mount William Road, Mount William Pond Road. They're meeting Wednesday night. It's, I guess, up to you if you want to wait. And at the public hearing, you can also change the warrant articles. So without their input, if you want to wait, it's entirely up to you.
I'd like to wait for their input.
Yep.
Okay, we'll wait. The next one is Article 21 is the all-veterans tax credit. I think I talked about. This would be increasing to those people that have participated in certain combats that are not eligible right now. There is some pretty, I mean, you have to be honorably discharged, and also you can't double dip, so you can't get it in both places.
Yep.
And it's the same that we give the regular veterans.
Yep.
Article 22 I added because after a long conversation with several of our taxpayers, since the reevaluation, typically what happens is, obviously, the assessments this time around went way, way up. So you're looking at the elderly that's still living on Social Security. Their incomes have gone, I would say, down on the price of fuel, the price of food, the price of everything else. So I reached out to Avatar, and typically what they do is they would recommend an increase in our levels. And right now, we've increased values from the reevaluation between 40 and probably 60% between the regular and the waterfront. Not that the waterfront people are the ones that are getting elderly exemption. So what you're looking at in front of you is to modify your current exemptions. And what I did is I, in a rounding fashion, added 30%, because that was the recommendation from Avatar. Doesn't quite give you 40, but it still gives you 30%. And I kept the income levels and the asset levels the same. Because I don't think anybody's got a huge increase in any of them. Because you're talking about 65 to 75, and 75 to 80, and 80 and above. So typically, your 65 to 75 now is 70. And 30% was 91, I just rounded it.
Yep.
And then 75 to 80 right now is 90. And then 80 and above is 300. I left it at 300 because I'm not sure, you know, on a big house like that, that in looking at those that get the elderly, they're not living in three, $400,000 homes. So just a thought, I thought it would be fair. I think the group of people are just as valuable to the community as anybody else. And I certainly don't want them to be uncomfortable in not being able to afford to stay here. So it was really just a thought I had. I did have a conversation with Avatar, and that's where we are.
So the only thing I question about that whole thing, the 80 years of age or older, $300,000. The comment you make that not, there probably aren't too many that do that. With the current reevaluation, I think that's probably changed. So I'd probably, I'd like to see the, I'd like to see, add that 30%, that same calculation that you did on the other two.
Yeah.
That's my opinion.
Yeah, I can do that. I just, that was just my thought, and that's why we had the conversation. Yeah, so I can change that, but I didn't change any of the other.
I agree with John on that, so.
Yeah, the biggest reason I say that is I have a rather modest house. Last year, it's valued at 175. I jumped up to 265. And I haven't done a damn thing other than add a deck to it. I could easily see a house that's slightly bigger easily hit that $300,000 mark, so.
I'm all right with it, I don't think.
John? You there, John?
Yeah, I'm still here.
Okay.
I don't have a problem with that.
All right, so I'll add a 30, 30%. Then we're going to move on to the cemetery trustees. As it's been explained to me that all three have resigned as of June 8th. We, to my knowledge, you guys didn't have any letters. I've asked you guys, it was said that you guys got letters. The town clerk has re-asked for letters because she has to put it on. She still has no letters, so you're going to see on the warrant or on the ballot that there is one position for three year, because that's what was up. So there's conversation, and has been conversation, about who's going to take over. So Article 23 has to do with, shall the town delegate the duties and responsibilities of trustees to the board of selectmen? If approved, because people pass away all the time, it can't just stop. If approved, the delegation will take effect 90 days after adoption and shall continue until rescinded vote by town meeting. I don't know what you feel about that, because it adds more to your plate. But at the same time, if you don't have any trustees and you don't have a sext, then you're going to have to do something.
Yeah, required to by law, so.
Yeah.
I mean, it can be rescinded anytime if you did find a group, all of a sudden, that wanted to get back into trustee part. There is going to be, as you see, the side prey money, so there's going to have to be some, you know, if something happens, somebody's going to, you know, we can't just stop.
So if somebody does come forward, say July, or we get a group of people that come forward and say they want to do it in July, we have to wait for the town meeting in March to change it?
Yeah.
Yep.
By doing this, you do.
Yep.
So can, is there?
But I don't know what happens, is how do you fill the other?
If you get one that's elected this time around, it's going to be on the ballot unless you remove it.
Or?
So you've got one, so then you have to fill two positions at some point later on, but the board.
But in the meantime, you have, what do you do with the person that passes away?
No, I'm wondering if, from a timeframe standpoint, instead of waiting until March, like we're having a special meeting in a couple of weeks regarding the code enforcement officer pickup truck, can we?
You have to file papers with the Secretary of State. You have a special town meeting to do that.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't think you can do it that quickly. Because right now, as things play out, we have no resignations in our hand.
Okay.
So we're proceeding that there's still three people.
Yep.
There's one up for election this year. So until those three letters come in.
Or until.
But at the meantime, if a phone call has been made and it's been stated that June 8th they all resigned, resigned, there's no meeting minutes to indicate that either. So without a letter, we're kind of in a quandary. So it's, I don't know.
So what are you doing with the 90 days? Do we have to have it 90 days after adoption?
That's state law wording.
Yep.
Yeah.
Well, because what happens is, you know, you're going to have people pass away during the winter months, probably.
Yeah, there's not much you could, but this is burials and stuff.
Right.
You don't do burials in the winter.
No, I know, but you're going to want to put them in the ground before July. Usually like them in before Memorial Day.
So I mean, you're going to have to. We'll have to cross that bridge when we come to it, I guess. I mean, it's, the state statute says 90 days, so I mean, we're stuck.
Yeah, it says if the majority is affirmative, then the delegation will take effect 90 days after adoption.
Unless you.
Can we get a, can we talk to the state and get a waiver on that or something?
You might be able to call the Attorney General and see if you can.
On state law?
Yeah, well, see what, see if they can find an exemption for it. See what they'd say. Or you'd have to start making arrangements with the funeral. funeral homes.
To have them store them in a freezer.
Something, you know, it's a quandary, it's, it's no doubt.
Well, this isn't new, this is new, Maureen and I have talked about it a little bit, as to how we're gonna solve it.
I mean.
So, you gotta decide what you're gonna do.
Allegedly, June eighth, they resigned.
Of twenty twenty-one.
Twenty twenty-one.
But we haven't.
If we had any burials between then and now, and who conducted those burials?
Yes, and I explained to you on my report that
Yeah.
I've been working with the sexton to try to make transition.
Yeah.
So she's been, it's not a paid position, but she's been helping out. Because you aren't just gonna pick up your stuff and run, because nobody here knows how.
Yep.
So she's been helping out. But they have been reached back out to by the town clerk, asking for another letter, so that we have something.
Do we, do we have anything in any emails, or just over the phone?
Over the phone.
Probably over the phone.
So, I mean, you guys can think about it, and you can pull it next week if you felt like it, I guess.
I think you gotta do something, I think, you know, you're kind of stuck.
Yeah.
It's a rock and a hard place here.
Either way.
Yeah.
I mean.
Unless we can get something in writing from him in the next week.
But Maureen's already, the window took close, well, I guess.
No, they still got a couple of weeks before.
The nineteenth of this month.
Nineteenth.
Um, yeah, they got nine days, so we got, we got till, yeah.
But I know, but Stat Stor, I think she has to advertise it's out now.
Yep.
Yeah.
For places.
So.
And then if you start to write in, you know who you get. All of the cartoon characters. So. We've been that rude. I mean, think about it, let's think about it, I guess I can reach out to a couple of people that I know, over at the AG's office and see what happens.
See what, see if they have a legal opinion.
I took that exactly from
Yeah.
the question, and the second paragraph, or the second sentence came exactly from the RSA two eighty-nine six. Two eighty-nine six.
Eighty-nine colon six, yeah. See if they've had any amendments to that, or any case law that goes along with it someplace.
All we can do is try.
Yeah, I know.
We can leave it for now, we can have a discussion, see what happens.
My opinion is, I think we.
The next one is also still up in the air, as we talked about it at the last Monday night, is so currently, you guys, and I put it in front of you, so currently, you guys have a code of ethics. So, in two thousand and six, we adopted a code of ethics which applies to all town officials, elected officials, appointed committee officials, and members and all employees that pass. And there was then attached was what I gave you, was this three-page. So, talks about the code of ethics, and then page two talks about the implementation, which talks about the formation, five residents of the town aware, form of three or more. Initially, the town moderator shall appoint the five. And then from there, it says, beginning March of oh seven, and it goes down through. We, we did away with, in two thousand and thirteen, we did away with the ethics committee, but we left the code of ethics in place. So, I've got Laura working on it, I just want you to know, I don't think you're gonna solve it this evening, there's just a lot of parts with that.
At that time, did the town moderator ever appoint anybody to this?
I know there was a committee, I don't know who would have pointed them. And I do know, in March of two thousand and seven, we never put it on the ballot, like we said we were gonna, we did the following year, I guess. But then what happened was, nobody was running, so every, it was left blank after the initial group started. So, I think it's, like I said, I have Laura working on it, but I don't know if a simple March of twenty-three is going to answer the question either. Because you already have the code that exists.
Code, that's why we don't have a committee.
I don't know how it works.
We don't have a committee able to.
So that was one that we had from last week, we had some thinking to do, Laura's looking at it as well. The last one, which I see I changed the number wrong, should be twenty-five, but anyway.
It'll be right now.
It's good.
Yeah, it's right now.
It's right now.
Maybe I knew something.
Yeah.
So Article twenty-five, we talked about briefly, and I don't know I'm mixed about this, and I'll tell you why, because it, the, if you look at the ordinance that's online, it doesn't tell you that any employee finance, like, if Beth wanted to be on there, it doesn't say she can't. Doesn't tell you what can and can't be on there, tells you what you can't do as far as running. So, I mean, I think this was a good idea, other than when we looked a little closer at the current ordinance, it doesn't permit, it doesn't tell you who can't get on, who can get on. It's kind of up to the moderator to pick a cross-section. Cross-section doesn't say you can't be an employee, you can't be a volunteer, you can't be part of another committee.
Has it always been the town moderator?
Yeah.
For this, yeah, so it's laid out that way.
I think it's
How did?
I think the thing is, is that
We've had.
I don't know, the rule of thumb in lots of situations like that is, is there a conflict? That you gotta look at, there's gonna be a conflict between whatever position.
But we're picking out two positions, and even though the article, the warrant article does say, the, it says, who seeks a local elected position
Yep.
shall be disqualified from serving, because remember, I talked about the supervisor of the checklist, or somebody like that. But when you take it, another step back and look at just the ordinance, it doesn't say that you can't be an employee.
That's right.
Doesn't say that you can't be a department head, doesn't say you can't be somewhere else. It just says the moderator has to select a cross-section. So are we getting in too deep at the moment, or, again, you guys have to decide?
Didn't, wasn't it at one time, the moderator was also on the finance committee?
Never has been. Who are you thinking about? Who?
Neil, I thought Neil was a moderator and finance.
Well, if he was the moderator, he couldn't be on there.
Really? I thought he was on it for a long time.
He was a moderator for a little while, but he was, I don't believe he was ever the moderator and on the finance committee.
He'd still be able to attend, though.
Yeah, that's part of your duties, that's part of your duties, but you're not there.
Yeah, I was just curious, because I thought he was, yeah.
Not with your appointing people. It's kind of an obvious conflict.
So, I don't know how you think about that, do you want to leave it, do you want to take it off, do you want to have the conversation at the public and then decide?
All right, I think, leave it. I mean, I know, if it was a an elected finance budget committee, they couldn't be.
Right.
They couldn't be, they couldn't work in a town department and then be on the budget committee to oversee their budget. I mean, it's a, that, it's an obvious conflict, and, so they can't do that, so, I mean, I think.
But I'll tell you what you guys can do, there's only four of you.
This is good.
I think you can leave it, you can hear what the public weighs in on
Yeah.
next Monday night, and then you guys have your opportunity at that point.
Yep.
You can take it or leave it, or think about pros and cons.
So wait till next week.
Yep.
Okay, so that's where we are, I know the fire chief just joined us, so he missed out on our discussion of Article eighteen, which is the radio. I don't know, thank you, Janine. I don't know if there's any discussion that wants to be had, or?
I had a discussion with the fire chief earlier today, and he's aware of what my intentions were coming into this.
Okay.
So, Chief, do you, did you want to speak towards the removal of Article eighteen? Okay.
Okay. All right. All right, so that honestly winds up the as far as the twenty twenty-two draft town warrant discussion. So what I'll do is I'll take off draft, and I'll have them prepared.
Okay.
And you can have them ready for handing out on next Monday, and from next Monday, we'll, I guess, take it from there.
Okay, so, moving along on the agenda, the next item is the manifest. To order the treasurer to sign the payroll and accounts payables check stated January thirteenth, twenty twenty-two, is included in the following manifest. Payroll manifest of seventy-four thousand, eight hundred and forty dollars and fifty cents, that's the weekly payroll. Twenty twenty-one accounts payable manifest of one hundred and fifty-three thousand, seven hundred and forty-eight dollars and ninety-eight cents. The twenty twenty-two accounts payable manifest for forty-eight thousand, six hundred and fifty-seven dollars and sixty-six cents, for a total of two hundred and seventy-seven thousand, two hundred and forty-seven dollars and fourteen cents.
Second?
All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
John?
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
We got it. Any other correspondence or other business?
I mean, I don't have anyone, we're gonna meet next week, as a reminder.
Yep.
It'll be a fairly lengthy meeting, just because you got the budget hearing starting, and all the warrant articles you'll go down through and listen to
Yep.
everybody's comment, at the end of that, I'd like to decide what you guys are gonna do, so that we can finish, and then we are meeting also on the twenty-fourth. And I'd like to not wait till the thirty-first to sign the thing.
Yep. I think so.
Okay.
Nothing else?
Make a motion, will you adjourn?
Second, all those in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
John?
Yeah, what are we voting on?
Adjournment.